Renee and staff is looking at some of the questions we had the other day. And I'll start there, going through those. We had an opportunity to get through a few things today and so let's go ahead and start.
Yeah, okay. So, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, there were some questions on Tuesday as it related to some of the budget items. And there was a question about, that Yolanda asked about Granville County. And did they implement a tax increase in order to build the jail? And I have that information, but let me pull it up on my email. I talked to the county manager. I'm sorry. Just give me a second. My apologies. I know Yolanda's not here, so I really could wait. But I will go ahead and So, Yolanda asked a question about that Granville started to, started to save money and before they built their, built their jail. So, the total cost of the the complex or the, yeah, the law enforcement complex project, which also includes animal control as well, was around thirty-three million dollars. The debt received for that project was approximately twenty-nine million dollars and the debt service payment each year was two point, is two point four million dollars. But just be mindful, things have increased significantly since 2020. So, the cost of our complex jail or whatever the board decides to move forward with would be more expensive for, for Vance County. The estimate for that was forty-five million, but the debt service payment would be four million dollars a year, which is, would be a ten cent tax increase if we decided to move forward with some type of complex. And so, that's the question answered for that particular item. Um, four million dollars a year for a jail complex or law enforcement complex or whatever we decide to move forward. A jail is forty-five million dollars.
So, that is just ten cents, you said?
Uh huh, because one penny is four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and six dollars.
And that will also include an EMS station?
No.
No?
That's totally separate.
Totally separate.
Mm-hmm. So, we, of course, we know we all have, we still have a need for EMS main as well as an EMS northern substation. And I would estimate, I'm not a contractor, I don't do construction, but my best guess for EMS main station would be, I would say, five million dollars. Warren County's was three million when they built theirs years ago. So, I would say five million dollars. So, in just those two capital projects alone, you're looking at fifty million dollars in order to move forward with those two projects. Yes, okay. So, some of the other questions that we had was Oh, so Sean, you had a question about management or oversight over, you mentioned management or oversight of sheriff's office budget. So, I was trying to process it. So, do you mean I would be, my, my office would be responsible for the financials for the sheriff's office completely?
Completely.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I did some research on that and Franklin County actually has their finance staff, well, the sheriff's office finance staff reports directly to the finance director. So, if that's something that the board had a desire to move forward with, we would have to fund a position out of the finance office, which of course, the position ultimately reports to me, the county manager. But their position would be physically located in the sheriff's office, but the sheriff would not supervise that person or have any authority over that person because they would report to finance if there's something the board decided to move forward with. And my recommendation, if you all decided to move in that manner, would be an administrative officer to oversee the budget for the sheriff's office as well as the detention center.
When you talked to Franklin, how long have they been doing that? When did they?
God, Chuck Murray was there then. He actually put that in place because of some issues that were going on in the sheriff's office. And I think Chuck retired in 2013, so it's been at least twelve, ten-plus years at minimum. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. And I also did some research. I know we had some conversation with the sheriff about as it related to GPS on the vehicles for the sheriff's office. So, I talked to Jonathan and of course, those vehicles do, they're county vehicles. So, the board of commissioners could make the decision to implement, to put GPS on all county vehicles if you all decided to move forward in that manner. So, county vehicles. I just wanted to make sure I had an answer for you all for that.
Trying to, the sheriff, and I was going to talk about the sheriff, he said all county vehicles, right now, are they on all county vehicles?
Uh huh, so, uh huh, that just happened this week, actually.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
With that, then we go to the service that also contracts the maintenance and tells when
No, just GPS only for right now.
Right now.
Yeah, I did not, no, I did not move forward with everything else. It's just GPS tracker only. Yeah. And that's through US Cellular and they've been implemented on county vehicles this week. Are you all done? Yeah?
If we can get an extended or upgrade a policy or and do maintenance, it will tell us when maintenance is due. Would then GPS.
With US Cellular?
Yes.
One second, please. Like when you want to find something, you can't find it. Anyway, there's a statute that supports, the sheriff said, the board of commissioners cannot have a resolution for what you just agreed on, county manager, and I will present this to you in a second. The statute number. And that including vehicles and my personnel.
And while you're looking for that, I'll pull up the email from our county attorney, which says otherwise, but you can send me the information.
I will.
Yeah, I think this is just something that you need to communicate with the county attorney on and then sort it out from there.
So, it would have been sorted out there.
Well.
County vehicles.
Um, Jonathan's email, because I just wanted verification from him because he is our attorney. It says the county may outfit, outfit or otherwise install equipment on their vehicles, their meaning county, county vehicles that they wish for them to have and may also allow others to do the same and may adopt rules related to the use of provided equipment, vehicles and other property and the alteration of it. And that came from our attorney, but I'll look at the information that the sheriff sends and sends it to, send it to Jonathan as well. He sent it to me, Sheriff? Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, everyone has a balance sheet. Didn't we pass that out? Did you pass that out? Yes, everyone has it, okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone has. I just wanted to, oh, Sheriff, I'm sorry.
I have it. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
County-owned vehicles. While the board of commissioners has authority to control the sheriff's budget pursuant to North Carolina general statute fifteen, one fifty-three A's, statute one oh three, the sheriff have exclusive jurisdictions with respect of supervision of his employees, which includes creating policies regarding vehicles driven by those employees attached. This means that the board of county commissioners cannot, cannot adopt a resolution forcing a policy on the person of the sheriff's office dealing with county vehicles.
Can you send it to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Jordan can, um, not Jordan, goodness gracious, he must be talking about me. Jonathan must, Jordan must be talking about. I'll send it to Jonathan to see what his interpretation is, just to make sure we're all on the same page. But that just came straight from the county attorney, so I just wanted to make sure you all had that information.
Well, can we ask the question, what you just stated? Didn't you say Franklin has it, Oxford has it?
Mm-hmm.
Then violation then, right?
Well, I guess, I guess it
How if the sheriff agrees to it?
Yeah.
Sheriff agrees to it?
If there's, right, if their sheriff agreed to it, that's a different story, but it sounds as if Curtis doesn't agree to it. So, but Jonathan said differently, so just, we have to do more research on that. And if it's something that we can do, that's not necessarily budget contingent, so, yeah. Yeah, but we can get that answer for sure. We'll definitely get that information. So, let's look at the balance sheet real quick. So, we were looking at I have, I had it written down on a board. I want to talk about it real quick. It's easier for me to look at it in another way. So, if you look at that, that sheet is really confusing, so I'm just gonna try to break down. So, funds available right now, and this is in, and this came straight from the audit. So, right now, the county has thirty-two point one million dollars of unrestricted funds. And so, what that means is the general fund has sixteen point nine million dollars. The school fund is six point million dollars, which can only be used for, for schools, of course. We have a capital reserve fund, capital reserve county fund for seven point six million dollars. And we also have ARPA funds for seven point six million dollars, but I do know that you all wanted to, we made a decision to, the board made a decision to move forward with two million dollars for the water project. So, in all, we have thirty-eight point one million dollars minus the six million for the schools. So, we have thirty-two point one million dollars of unrestricted funds on hand. Just wanted to make sure that you all knew that. And Stephanie and Chuck have been having conversations and any big projects that you all decide to move forward with, anything that's over five hundred thousand dollars, Chuck and Stephanie agreed that we should finance that. The county should not be in a position in which you just pay cash for projects. You should always incur a debt to do those things. And that was a recommendation from Chuck Murray as well as Stephanie Williams. So, we had that conversation today, so I just wanted you all to know what type of cash on hand that we actually have right now.
You say anything over five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Did we finance instead of paying cash?
Yes. And Dan asked a question about um, our current debt schedule. We don't have any real big debt dropping off until what year was that, Stephanie? Because I don't have it. I left it down. Twenty twenty-seven. Yeah, so, the real big debt drops, starts to drop off in twenty twenty-seven, so, yeah. And, um, let's see. So, I remember on Tuesday night, we were going back and forth on how we wanted to move forward. I was asking for a direction or a consensus on how do we move forward with, with fire? And so, if I had to make a recommendation on the fire tax, their revenue neutral rate is five point nine four. But I've been, you know, in talking with the fire association with some of the chiefs in reference to the challenges that they have. And it would be my recommendation to increase the fire tax rate from five point nine four to a minimum of seven cent in order to fund them more this year and increase the hourly rate as well to be able to recruit the volunteer firefighters. I know Dan had some concerns about waiting, but I think I just need a decision on how we move forward with, for fire, for the fire tax.
I think the conversation we had was, it's my understanding that we have not been reimbursing them for FICA,
Mm-hmm.
for workers' comp and those things.
For the contract.
Their current contract.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we need to immediately reimburse them for all of those things.
Oh, yeah, that we can, we can do that.
Do that in this budget year, as soon as we can get the numbers together and write a check.
Okay.
And, and then from there, I think we, you know, there, there are a couple of issues, I thought. Fifteen dollars an hour doesn't work.
Yeah, I would recommend seventeen, actually. Seventeen would be good.
So, that would, you know, if we want to go ahead with that number and consensus on that, then we can go ahead with that and then
I can agree with that because I've talked to him too in terms of doesn't matter, fifteen needs to be a high rate. Also, the fire tax needs to go up as well as reimbursing for the FICA and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Those expenses, they don't need to incur.
Okay. The other thing is, is we need to see what is required for financial review that would not put the county at risk, if we can get those costs down because, and that's something we're gonna have to acknowledge and, and we're gonna have support because if we're requiring that. So, we need to, to definitely look at that and see, see what's happening there. You know, we, we, I think allocate fourteen hundred dollars now and they're telling us to six thousand.
Thousand, mm-hmm, correct. That's right.
That's, that's not something that's sustainable for them.
Mm-hmm. So, if the fire tax were to increase to seven cent, that would be able to fund them an additional amount per year. So, the additional per year, the seven cent would, their revenue would be two, a little over two, two million dollars from the current one point seven, from the one point seven million right now. So, that would give them additional for an increase per, um, per station, so.
We're gonna have absorb their FICA and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm, yes, mm-hmm, yes, sir. And it's in their contract. We just need to start reimbursing them. And I haven't read the contract, but it's my understanding that it's in the contract.
And they submit a request to you?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yep, and then, even though it's based on seventeen dollars an hour, when they submit it, are they submitting the FICA cost in that or just submitting the hourly rate?
I think it's just the hourly rate, I think.
That thing that come to you show the total cost for that part-time person?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, yeah.
Is that way to make sure you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chris? Lady FICA is included.
Oh, is it already included? Oh, okay, so it's already
Can y'all come up here?
No, we're not going to start that. We're not gonna have a conversation. Okay, bottom line, the contract says they'll be reimbursed. We'll check it out and see what they have been reimbursed and have been reimbursed. We'll get them reimbursement based on the contract. And all, so that, so there'll be hold with all of that.
Okay. And so, we need to agree on an amount per, well, we need to agree on a, a tax rate and then an amount per fire, for a volunteer fire department.
If you say seven, if you worked out it, and you say seven, you think that'd be what best and
I mean, that's my, as, as a county manager, that's my recommendation.
Tax rate is what?
Five point nine four, revenue neutral is five point nine four.
Five point nine four?
Mm-hmm.
So, you're bringing in about three hundred thousand dollars more?
Yes, so, yeah, mm-hmm, correct. That's right. It would go from one point seven to two, to a little over two million. That's right.
What was it, the fire tax balance?
The fund balance?
Fund balance. Fund tax, how would you say?
The fund balance.
Fund balance? Be around six hundred.
Yeah, with an additional going into it this year. About six twenty-five right now.
Are we gonna Can we just dis, dis, disburse that tomorrow?
No. Why? We don't need to until we finish the fire study.
If the board wants to do so, that's up to y'all.
But that should be part of the consideration of when we finish the fire study.
So, what you, where did you say, essentially, do what?
They have to disperse the fund balance.
Yeah, and
It's that money and it's just sitting
I mean, this person to do it for, I mean, I just
For them to handle what they need to handle, because it's gonna always be built back up. Because what they don't use, it goes back, right?
It does.
But what they don't use, it goes back. And we only get three hundred thousand between eight fire departments, I think it may be feasible to give them some of it so they can operate.
They, they're operating, we give, they're gonna get probably thirty to fifty thousand dollars with just this money here. And we're talking about starting on this in July and having a resolution to this, but in August, up until August. And so, I just, I just think it's premature to have this conversation, to start thinking about dispersing the fund balance. And then also, we need to conceive what type of fund balance we need to
We're not dispersing everything, just what they need, right?
Yeah.
Well
And right now, nobody
I'm saying, I just want to get a clear
Right. Well, I think what Sean is saying, disperse, are you saying the entire balance or a certain amount, like a one-time certain amount to each? Because they, they came back in January to request even dispersment. And of course, that wasn't approved. So, are you, are you mentioning, are you exploring the entire balance or a certain amount?
I think so.
Some of it, not all of it, but enough where they can operate.
Right.
Even though we gonna go up on the taxes, we gotta go up to give them what they need.
Yeah, and I've been receiving some of their budgets this week as well.
I think, you know, it'll be feasible because it's, it's gonna build back up.
Okay.
And if we give them all to them, something majorly happens, it's nothing there for them.
Well, I mean, maintain a fund balance and that, just like we do for county. You need to have
Right.
Well, we always gonna have that fund balance, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean
I'm just trying to get a clear understanding.
It just depends on
Always have it, but
Though I, though I don't agree with the fire study, the fire study shows that in five or six years, the fund balance
Depleted. Mm-hmm, right.
So, but I, I, I think the numbers are wrong.
The fire study?
The fire study, yeah. That showed, uh, showed the fund balance running to nothing in the next five, five or six years.
Are we included in, um, rescuing here too, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yes.
I just want to make sure whatever you do
Yes, ma'am, without a doubt, yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
A minimal amount that must remain in this fund balance?
You asking that question? Yes, we do. And I, I, to be honest with you, I don't a hundred percent know, I'm gonna have to get back to you and give you that answer. I don't know, Yolanda.
So, we need to look at that too to make sure.
Oh, okay. So, there, oh, okay.
There is in the county.
Okay, but not the fire tax.
But that being a
I have to look at this
Enterprise fund is not subject to that.
That I don't know, but
That's what I think we need to check in.
Yeah.
But at the end of the year, they, when they return the money
Text Jonathan, see if I can get the answer.
How much is coming back from them this year?
A little over, I believe it's a little over two hundred thousand.
Almost a quarter of a million.
Can we give them some of that?
I'd say, that's what I say. I mean, everything is going up.
They're incurring costs today unforeseen in terms of being able, being able to deal with. So, I would say give them some of that. You said it's gonna build back up anyway.
Uh huh.
Give them some of it.
Does anybody have a recommendation on an amount to disperse?
Do we need to find
As you, since we can't talk to them, what do you, what do you recommend, Renee?
First thing we need to do is we need to see how much we're gonna reimburse them with what we owe them.
Well, if we give them this money, then that can be part of the reimbursement. We ain't gotta reimburse nothing.
I mean, and that, some of that, that, you still need to, to itemize that so that we're, the contract.
Either we do one or the other. I feel like they need it now and we ain't gotta worry about doing that.
Oh, there's definitely a need now.
Feel like we give it to them now, let them pay what they got to pay, let them do what they doing, and we ain't gotta come back later. We can just keep moving on.
I support giving, giving them something.
Okay.
You know, if we take the six, when, I don't even know how much is in there.
Let's just say six, let's say, let's just say six twenty-five.
Six twenty-five divided by eight? Hold on. Nine?
Nine.
Hold on.
Rescue.
Hold on.
About ninety thousand per.
That's Sixty-nine, four, four, four?
That would depleted though, right?
Mm-hmm, sixty-five.
Yeah, I'm trying to get that answer as well.
Three divided by nine.
Nineteen seventy-seven.
Seventy-two thousand. And
We don't want to deplete, no.
So
I don't want to deplete it.
No, we don't want to deplete. How about, um, half, half of the seventy-two?
So, thirty-six?
Thirty-six per. So, they, we give them half the money and we keep half on it.
One time. Yes.
I know, we're looking to give them money to reimburse them, so exactly how much is it as owed?
I don't, I don't know. We have, we would have to run a report and look back.
We don't know those numbers right now. And until we know those numbers, then, you know, we're, we're kind of
I don't think that it would be a huge number though.
Okay.
We're just talking about FICA? What is it, FICA and?
Yeah, if, if they got a, you got workers' comp, which workers' comp, I don't know what the workers' comp rates off of. Five
Three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So, they come out better getting the thirty-six thousand and let them do what they got to do.
Our workers' comp is usually sixty-two hundred and five thousand.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that for the
We give them the half? I like half. Yeah, we give them half, we keep half, we ain't gotta worry about that later.
But, but what our workers, our contract is based on is the two that we put, the payroll we allow. It's not for the, the rest of the fire departments. Now, you know, if we give them extra money, then they can use that towards that. But based on our contract, those monies are supposed to be for the positions that we allocate and them using those positions. So, you know, if there's, if it's five thousand dollars a year, that kind of thing, that is what, you know, you might be looking at. But we just need to
I have an answer. There is no minimum for the fire tax. That was correct. You were correct. There is no minimum.
And at the, you know, the day the city, people in the city pay as part of city taxes, so our fire is covered with the city, with the money we pay in terms of taxes?
But no city tax, those, people in the city do not pay fire tax.
Okay, so this is just for the people outside in
Yes, ma'am.
And this fire tax is for, to cover those volunteer fire departments that's
Covers for the county, yes, ma'am.
Really is collected from the people to make sure that they have
Protection, absolutely.
Volunteer fire
Yes, ma'am.
So, it's their money.
It is.
They're collecting on behalf of them to make sure that they are adequately
And they have protection.
Do everything they need to do, including staff, equipment and so, and such, including benefits and whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in terms of us spending their money for them, you know, I don't have a problem with it because we are collecting that money for them.
For them, it's for them. Mm-hmm.
So, to ensure that they get what they adequately need
Yeah.
and then have a reserve in case there is a situation that arises in which we need to cover with the remaining fund balance. I don't see a problem with that. Us, not all of it has been said. No, we don't need to get them all because we don't need to deplete, but we do need to make sure that their interest is taken care of in terms of the benefits they need for the staff, equipment, payroll and all that stuff, you know, and even if they choose to hire someone else to give them additional coverage, we need to make sure that their interest is protected because we're collecting the money on their behalf.
For the county, yes.
That's just the way I feel about it.
We give them half. We give them half, we get the seventeen and seven cent, go up to seven cent. I think they would happen. They'll operate.
I am.
Okay.
Okay. So, but I need, also, my re-
So, let's just say we get forty thousand dollars.
Thirty-six. It's thirty-six. It's half of it. Thirty-six is half.
Okay, well, thirty-six thousand. And then we got, and then we need to make them write on there. Um, like it's a lot of FICA and, you know, we don't do that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
We get a copy of their audit.
Yes, and so, I was gonna actually say, I'm, I, because I, me and Chuck and Stephanie were talking earlier. I don't know that we've been seeing the reviews. Well, I'm, I don't know if we have been receiving it, but it just started in November. So, I haven't seen any reviews, but we will request those annually for sure.
And that is just to check some balances and keep everybody happy on the same page.
Okay.
They should be in good shape.
Yes.
Okay.
And I guess we can take that action. Not tonight, yeah. In our next, next calendar meeting, we could take that action to do this budget.
Okay, all right.
Worry about the other stuff later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, enough now.
So, um, so, seven cent
Yes.
tax rate for fire?
Correct.
Okay, and the annual amount for each volunteer department?
Seventeen, seventeen.
No, uh, what hourly rate is gonna be seventeen, but right now, we allocate a hundred thousand dollars a year.
We, we, that would be, that's part of why we need to wait till after we complete the fire study to see how that's all we're gonna allocate out.
Well, I would, I would recommend an increase now, actually, just because what they, they do need it. I, I would agree that they need it.
There's no doubt they need it.
They need it, so.
Doubt in that, that we need to do that.
Yeah.
Just give to them.
But we don't know the format and how this whole thing is gonna go out with the fire. Just put the money in there now for them and make adjustments later. Yeah. I mean, that's what it needs to happen.
Yeah.
This study gonna still be taken care of.
Put the money in there, adjust it later, do everything we said, and let's go.
Okay. So, my recommendation is one thirty per year?
Yeah, that's fine.
Y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
Have consensus?
Um, yes, yes, ma'am.
That's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And you're putting two hundred, or three hundred thousand in. So, that covers that. And then there'll be an additional general fund allocation for another twenty or thirty thousand for the rescue squad.
The rescue squad, make sure they include.
Uh, oh, yeah, yes, ma'am.
They included.
Okay.
You're not sliding them.
Okay, oh, yeah, no, never, okay.
Next.
Okay, so, the, the only other thing we need to talk about is um, property tax and the revenue neutral rate, of course, was sixty-one point two nine or sixty-one point three. And of course, that sixty-one point three does not support any capital projects such as your jail, such as your EMS station, um, northern or the main station. And we also had conversations on Tuesday night about how do we stop the bleeding when it comes to staffing? Um, I've expressed concerns on staffing and, um, minimum staffing, like in our nine-one-one center, um, the detention center has issues, social services has issues. And I proposed a four percent COLA, but in order to stop the bleeding even more, it would be beneficial to increase the COLA, in my opinion, if we could do that. Um, so, an additional three percent COLA If we could do that, um, so an additional three percent COLA possibly for, for county employees, which would be effective in July, would be beneficial for staff, but of course, that comes with a one cent tax increase. The additional three percent is a one cent tax increase. But if y'all wanted to explore financing for an EMS main station, northern substation or a jail, that's at least nine more cent, so.
So.
It's a lot, but, and I do understand, go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean it.
No, you're fine.
Hate cutting folks up.
No.
So, ten cent is basically with the three cent, then salaries will go up.
Seven percent COLA.
So we'll be compatible, everybody's salary will be compatible. We have enough money to afford a jail and bill anything else in the next couple of years that we need.
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt.
So, so the jail salaries will be compatible, the sheriff's salaries will be compatible with other counties. DSS salaries, because they over, over half understaffed, so now all salaries be compatible with other counties.
Surrounding counties.
Ain't gotta worry about losing nobody.
Yes, and it helps bridge the gap until we can implement the study to look at, like Dan spoke about compression. So the study could really focus on compression when the study happens. Cause so.
I'd like to hear on that.
So compression is when you have employees that are more tenured and have been with the county longer, and you have a new person coming in, their salaries are pretty much the same, just because we don't do merit increases. We do COLAs, but we don't have any paid for performance, so there's no way for an employee to move through their grade unless you have a COLA, unfortunately. And that's, I wanted to do, um, performance pay this year, but I think a COLA would be more beneficial because of where we are right. So, cause merit is based off your performance, but a COLA would be for everyone across the board.
Been a year or so, gives you a chance to.
Yes.
To work through it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Again. Me, you're putting the cart before the horse. You're talking about doing an additional. I understand the four percent COLA. That's consistent across the board with most counties and all through the nation, pretty much. But the additional part of it, to do that before the salary study, this.
But it bridges the gap before the, and it reduces the amount of implementation for the study. That's the purpose. That's the purpose. Yeah, well, I, I have it proposed in the budget because Evergreen didn't do us any justice. Yeah, it cost one point two million dollars, but it, when I look at the information and I look at our pay plan, it didn't do us any justice.
Based on your HR background, it's a.
Yeah, I would have never gone with Evergreen, but, yeah.
Grand County is the most underpaid county in our tri-count area, first and foremost. So with this ten percent increase, ten cent, excuse me, ten cent increase, everybody's salary now is compatible. So we ain't gotta worry about losing no more good people to go to another county for a couple of dollars. So, just like the sheriff, his people make like forty-one, forty-two, now they be making like forty-four, forty-five. So he shouldn't leave no body because somebody going somewhere else for a couple of thousand dollars. We have to up, to keep up. We cannot grow, we cannot prosper, and we can't get everybody what they need to function and operate, just like the fire department. We, we have to move for the future. Grand County went up ten cent, the state went up twenty-nine.
Granville went up nine. Granville went up nine cent over revenue neutral.
You know, and if we at eighty-nine, and we going seventy-one, we still saving seventeen. So it's still good.
But my conclusion, looking at others, if we don't grow our budget, we don't grow our county.
That's correct. We will always be the.
That's the bottom line. If we don't grow the budget in terms of the needs, the needs that we have in this community, if we don't grow the budget, we don't grow the county. And if we're gonna move forward, we've gotta, and having been in education and training, you train people, lose people, that is a financial loss to the county.
It is.
Because you're training, you gotta evolve.
We're a training camp. I agree. And, um, even with the tax increase, um, it reduces the amount that we will pull. So right now, this, it took me two point three million dollars to balance the budget. Last year it was one point eight. And so when you think about, you know, increasing your tax, your tax rate, it helps not, it allows you not to pull so much from your general fund balance. And of course, don't forget, sales tax was, was increasing during COVID, but it's starting to come back down. So we're starting to lose those revenues again. So the revenues are not where they used to be, so.
In my conversation with people also, as you look at increasing the, what is it, increasing the tax rate, you benefit, you benefit the county, you benefit the people. And, uh, and there's some things we, you know, we're not gonna make money, like Yolanda said the other day in terms of working with the bus around town and everything, certain things you do that you do for the feel-good, you know, what I call the feel-good of the community and everything. And I think that we don't profit from everything, but at the same time, we position ourselves so that this county is moving forward.
I agree.
And if we don't take advantage, what we, in terms of conversation at the League of Miss, how that we were at this week, and we talk with people and everything, if you don't take advantage of revow in terms of increasing taxes to a certain extent, you might as well forget it.
I would agree with that.
As well forget it in the future year. This is the time to do it. That's my speech.
We're not in the job. It's not my, my intention that we're here to grow government. Um, you know, if, if, what you're asking is you're asking people and to, to make pay taxes, additional taxes, this county has not changed in population, except negatively in the past eighteen years. The other counties around us are growing in population.
They raising taxes.
And so, I, I, I cannot support a ten cent tax increase in, I, I, above revenue needs when we've already got a fifty-four percent fund balance. And it just, it doesn't make sense, and, and I, I just, I can't, I can't support that. You know, if you leave the money in the people's pockets and let them invest that money, then the county can grow that way too. And that's, that's an idea to, to deal with, but this, as far as, you know, some of the stuff we're talking about doing tonight is just, it, it makes no sense to raise, to, to do a tax increase like that. I, I mean, I can't support that at all.
I respect his opinion, but I went back and figured my, and figured mine based on what I paid before, based on my property and everything. When I, what I paid before, what I paid before is an increase of two and fif- two and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
I throw away two and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I actually have a.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think we are growing government. We are trying to have an efficient government. I think by doing this, we give our county manager the opportunity to go through and look at where there's fluff. She will get rid of it, she will deal with it, but at the same time, I don't think we tie her hands at this particular point and not increase our tax. And, you know, if we don't do it now, no need to come back and say, let's go up five cent, you know.
And that's the truth.
There's no need to do it. You do it now, you do it now. I think, I, I think we take a chance. We do our church budget, we do our faith and everything. So we do our church budget sometime, and that's how we, you know, you take it and leave the faith.
Yeah, while you look at, at your two hundred and fifty dollars, doesn't matter a whole lot to you. The, the median income in this county is forty-three thousand dollars.
But.
That's a whole lot of. Okay, but here's what's gonna happen. When you increase these taxes, they live somewhere. So what is that landlord gonna do?
He's gonna increase.
He's gonna increase his rent.
He's gonna increase.
And people already can't afford the rent. And so it, it affects people, it affects people, poor, wealthy, whatever.
Orange beef sheet is twenty-six dollars in one coat. It's a hundred and seven dollars now for the same piece of sheet. Everything goes up now. That's life. Everything goes up. I'm trying to grow the county. We ain't trying to stand still. If that's the case, we ain't got to raise up the fire tax so they can get what they need. If that's the case, we ain't got to raise it so the sheriff can get capable salary so he can get a full staff. Everything has to, you know, you got to give, you got to give something.
You find ways to cut costs in other areas.
We.
We sat down a while ago and, and probably found close to a million dollars.
I don't think it was a million. It definitely wasn't a million dollars.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars.
It was a few typos, and, but, but, but remember, the money's there, but it's not being spent. The line item is there, but it hasn't been spent historically. So, we, every year, we.
Let me ask you a question. What are you willing for the county to give up not to increase its balance? You willing them to give up a new jail? What are you willing for the county to get? We're talking about having the county go forth satisfying financing some of these needs. So what are you willing for the county to give up for the next five years? Because we know we don't have the money for a new jail. And so what do you want us to give up?
I, I think there are alternatives to explore the jail.
I name them. Name the alternatives.
Regional, regional alternative.
Nobody doing a regional.
We haven't been able to get anybody to any region. So what else do you think we're giving up?
I can tell you that I've been having conversations, and a regional jail is a possibility.
Building a new jail is.
How long has it been a possibility, Dan?
Well.
Cause it's been a possibility for ten years, and Granville County went out there and spent thirty-some million dollars, you said, or what?
Thirty-three.
They didn't come to the county and say, would you help us in a regional jail to build a jail? They went on and built a jail. And so now here we are stuck looking for a partner to build a regional jail when part of our region is already built a jail. And it looks like another part of our region, Franklin or somebody's getting ready to build a jail. So my question is, is still the question, what do you want the county to give up? Tell me what you want them to give up.
Uh, we can find efficiencies.
You keep talking problems and this and that. I want you to be.
Well, you're, you're asking me right now to, to go down a line item budget and tell you what we can cut. I mean, yeah, I can spend the next week or so and do that and come back with a list of things we can cut.
Well, in the meantime, can we?
Okay, so let me, let me throw one other caveat out here that has nothing to do with, because you can't give me anything you want us to give up. We say we want all these things, but we don't, uh, giving up anything. So, here's the other thing. Th- this is for you guys. I'm all in favor of raising the county salaries. Because we absolutely need to raise the county salaries. We've got, uh, job openings and DSS that have been sitting open for over a year. Because we won't pay people what they want and they go elsewhere. So we need to raise the county's salary. But for you to think that raising the salaries, as you put it, is gonna make us equitable with the other counties? Yeah, it'll make us equitable for five hours. And then, because history has shown that they keep going up. Every time we go up to match them, they go up again. So we're not gonna be in a position to keep going up to match them. We can bring them, uh, bring our county equity with them for an hour or two. And then they're gonna go up. But I just wanna give you that caveat. That having been said, I'm in favor of raising the salaries because we have to raise the salaries to get employees into this county and to get them to stay here. DSS is a big example, but the sheriff talks about it, uh, jail, all of these positions that are sitting vacant for six months, eight months, a year, that we can't hire people for and that we lose people for because we don't have the, the salary at a place where we can get them or keep them. We need to change that paradigm. We need to shift that.
Sheriff, how many people have you lost in a detention center to other jails?
We've had twenty-two people. This been for over, over two years.
Say that again.
I have twenty-two vacancies at the Vance County Detention Center and seven at the sheriff office. Those vacancies at the detention center have been going on over two-year period of time.
Because of salary.
Salaries and unsafe working condition at the facility.
One thing at a time.
Uh, salaries.
So, with this raise, now your salaries will be compatible with every other county right?
But not for long.
But not for long, but we, we cut the bleeding.
I really believe it would attract some people to our county.
And it was stopped.
And Dan knows.
It was stopped the African migration, right?
Yes.
He knows we have this problem at DSS. He knows.
I mean, I'm well aware of the salary problem.
And so we have a real salary problem. I just don't want you to, I don't want you to believe that that fixes the problem. All it does is brings it to a point where we can go.
What I thought we had going on here was our manager had asked for a salary study, and we've supported that. But then all of a sudden, we want to put the cart in front of the horse so that we don't really know. There's some areas that.
Dan, if you believe, but if you believe what I just told you, by the time we do the salary study, it'll bring us back to where the other.
Implement it to next year. Yeah, that's the whole year out. We will implement it next year. There's no way the jail can continue to operate or my nine-one-one center or DSS.
Go with what you recommend. Yeah.
So what do you think about salary, Dan? What do you, how you think? I'm not, like I said, I'm, right now, I'm just thinking, what do you think about, how do we get people better paid? What, what do you think, our current situation? I'm just, cause we gotta get, I'm, you know, we gotta pay our people.
My thought is, we've got. We, we've got four percent in the budget right now.
And it's not a lot.
And that's not enough.
That's not a lot.
That's, that's not enough.
It's not, it's not.
And so.
Cause I'm concerned about taxes as well. I'm concerned about raising taxes. I'm really concerned. But I'm also wondering, how do we get what we need? We, what, how do we fix this issue? Not next year, next year, keep saying possibility. Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling right now. I understand, I understand all of that. Because like I said, this tax is, is a big issue because I listen to these people that came before us. I'm looking at the whole picture.
We, we've got fund balance at this year if we allocate, uh, you know, we don't know right now whether it's gonna cost us a million dollars or two million dollars once we get this pay study back.
Whatever it costs, Dan, we still gotta spend it.
But we gotta spend it.
We gotta be realistic. Even if we do have a, a study done and they come back, it's not gonna be lower than where we at now.
No, it's not.
If anything, they're gonna say we need to give them more money. Prolonging the situation. It ain't just about paying these people salaries. It's also about the quality of service. You know, if you have a department and have the vacancies, you know, the positions are vacant, but you have people in the community are requesting these services and there's no one to give them these services, there's a void. There is a gap and there's people there that are suffering because of that. You know, I'll give you this example with social services. I know people who have applied for benefits. It's not that they're not qualified, it's that nobody there to process the applications. So therefore, you have people in the community, they can't go out and spend money at the businesses here or paying the rent here or whatever because they're having to spend that money where they normally wouldn't have to spend because state has already given those funds to the, to Department of Social Services. But there's nobody to process those applications. We need to get people in place. We don't need to wait for a study until we can get a situation where people can be adequately compensated and get people hired. And then it creates dissension because if I get a job and I come and you pile me with loads and loads and loads of paperwork, because you didn't have nobody there, I may not like that job. I'll wait till you finish training me, then I'll go to Wake County because I know they're gonna pay me more money.
And they're gonna let you work from home. That's right. So we're, we're losing in all different ends right now. You're absolutely right.
And we can't keep prolonging the situation. We got to take some kind of action now to put things in place. And then if the fire, then we can visit the study later when it comes back and see where we are with it.
Yeah, right.
And decide which way to go at that point in time.
And you.
Decide we wanna study.
Right.
Because if we are on levels with everyone else, we may decide we don't want to vote to have a study implemented. Cause that's more money as well. But we gotta get people hired.
Right.
I know plenty of people are calling, you know, that they can't, uh, get their services because there's not enough state.
Right.
And that's wrong.
Yeah, you are doing this county lease service.
So, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What have, you guys just came from a meeting with state somewhere. What are the surrounding counties doing in terms of raising that?
Jumping through the roof?
It's, no, no, give me some numbers.
Granville County went up nine, Franklin County, I think, went up thirteen.
Franklin County went up thirteen.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't confirmed any of that. I don't know. Oh, that's right, you all.
Franklinton went up more than the county because they trying to build. Wake County went up, because they about to build a whole new Brandon jail. They done ran out of space. Everybody.
But I'm interested in Granville, Franklin, Warrenton. The Warren County go up?
Yeah, uh, uh, Warren County, their revow is next year.
Their revow is next year.
Their revow is next year. But Granville went up nine, nine cent over revenue neutral.
Went up nine cent in revenues.
Yes, sir.
And Franklin went up thirteen, thirteen cent in revenues. And their total budget is what over ours? What is the total budget of Granville County versus us and, and Franklin versus us?
I recall, they, their budgets are higher than that.
I think Granville's about eighty-seven, eighty-eight. About thirty million more than us.
Yeah, thirty million dollars more than ours.
And they still went up nine cent.
At numbers greater than ours.
They got considerable amount from the state, much more than we did.
Granville County.
If they got the civil amount of millions more than we did. So in order to be competitive in terms of doing what we need to do to make sure we are able to provide the governmental services that we are required to provide, we may have to go up on our taxes so that we can be able to get the bill whenever those bills come in and still go ahead with certain projects, even if we have to fund them on our own, with, you know, more of our own resources. And then try to get more money from the state next year, you know, X, our legislature, you work a little harder, try to get us more money. Because Franklin County did very well last year.
Yeah, they did.
And, and what you're telling me is, with those numbers, we're always behind. Even at ten cent, we're behind.
Yeah, we, 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 yeah.
For our citizen and those that are listening, what is the rate, what you, can you tell me the mortgage, what they're gonna be paying over on so they can really understand what?
Yes, ma'am. So we. So we ran some numbers earlier. So so if a person, a property owner that has a hundred thousand dollar property. Um it'd be additional hundred dollars per year. Um so let's say a person with a five hundred thousand dollar property, it's an additional five hundred dollars per year.
It's over the eight years.
Uh huh, yes, since you all decided to keep a eight-year revale cycle, yes. Okay.
And keep in mind, we haven't raised taxes in eight years. Eight years we haven't raised, God. It was another eight years.
Yeah, I think it's been ten.
So the last twenty seven.
Every fifty thousand is ten dollars. Are you saying it's every?
Fifty dollars. Every fifty thousand is fifty dollars, um huh.
So I just want, like I said, Karen will teach me to give me numbers.
He's not, he's not satisfied with it.
And I'm still, like I said, I'm I'm still trying to, well, we go to form, whatever we choose.
You good?
I'm good.
You're good, you?
I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
So I guess we good then.
So.
We raised a ten cent.
That's four? Five?
Four.
Four.
Watch, you're okay with ten cents?
Say again?
You're okay with ten cents?
Am I okay with ten cents?
Yes, sir.
That's what I asked.
Give me the numbers again. In terms of what does ten cent mean in actual numbers?
Yeah, that's why I just actually.
Yeah, so um one cent is four hundred and thirty-two thousand.
On a hundred thousand dollar house, what is?
It's a hundred dollars.
That's a hundred dollars.
Yeah, on a hundred thousand dollar house. Five hundred thousand dollar house, five hundred dollars additional. Just, yeah, it just depends. Yeah, it's.
But on a business that's gonna invest a hundred million dollars, how much is that?
Damn, come on.
If they're gonna invest a hundred million dollars, they gotta invest.
Thank you for saying.
But they can go, but they can go to another county whose tax rate is low.
We had the highest tax rate, we we up at ten cents, we lowered the tax rate, lowest it's ever been, we eighty-nine cents, we the five, we have the. Five highest taxes in North Carolina. So it's a win-win. We're gonna move down from eighty-nine cent to seventy.
One, seventy-one, seventy-one point three.
So we're reducing the tax rate from eighty-nine cent to seventy-one cent. You would like to leave it at eighty, no, you wanna leave it at five. Six, you wanna leave it at six.
And and I'm I'm open to have a conversation.
And we're talking about moving it to seven.
Well, we wanna go ten, I wanna go ten cents.
I'm talking about the tax.
One, two, three, four.
We're talking about moving at a revenue neutral from six cent. To seven one, about one point.
Yes.
About ten cents.
About ten cents, but it's, it, what she said, it gets in a position, what you said, tell, recap for us in terms, what it gets in position that. We position ourselves to look to be able to build jail down the road.
Uh so the one percent goes to the additional um cola to, in addition to the four percent that I already recommended. The other nine cent could go to the jail project and EMS Northern Station, EMS Main Station. And Yolanda made a comment about a pay study. So if we're in a situation in which the pay study comes back. And says we have to implement for compression and for implementation of the study next year, we already have the funding. The the taxes have already been raised in order to support it. So it does, we wouldn't need an additional tax increase to support a pay study implementation. If that's something that you all chose to move forward with.
What's the cost of the four percent cola?
Four percent cola? It's, I think it's five hundred and seventy, five, five seventy-four. No, 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 no. That's not right. So it's a little over a million for the seven. So I think it was like six seventy-four. I can't remember. We had, I had it written down earlier, what the number was. Twenty cent, the city of Henderson, yes.
And they fully stash.
The city of Henderson live in Vance County?
Don't they understand they live in Vance County?
You can see a mass exodus from the city of Henderson.
So are we finished with this subject?
Finished with this.
Are we finished with this?
Do I have consenses on ten cent?
Forty-two? You have senses.
Okay, alright. Once, um, we'll talk about it in a minute. Okay, carts. Oh, wait a minute, what is it?
It's forty-two.
Carl had said it was ten cents.
He did?
I'm o- I'm okay with ten cents. I mean, the city of Henderson went up twenty cent.
They did.
And we're moving, we're talking about revenue neutral is uh point six one and we're talking about going to point seven, one, one, one percentage one.
No, you're not talking, you're talking about going up from sixty-one cents to seventy-one cents.
Okay, we're going up ten cents, yeah.
That's um, that's bottom line, man. That's um.
What?
I don't wanna pay it, but I'll go up with it.
I mean, I don't wanna pay it personally, but I just say it's the county and the community I live, I want my county and community I live in to get better.
Okay.
So we're good?
Yes, ma'am. We're we're good.
Okay.
What's next?
Carts. We need to go back to our conversation about carts. So I spoke to Terrell.
We did have to do this. Revenue neutral in terms of doing this, because we talked to folks when we were at this meeting. And you know, we talked about every four years, every six years, every eight years. And we, in terms, we, the whole gamut from eight, six, and four. And the discussion leans toward four. And the reason the discussion leans toward four is that the real estate market is volatile. And so what happens is if you wait too long, you're caught in what we've got to call it in this eight years. And we really need to look at in terms of either four or six years. I know I, my compadre here and everything says the cost. It cost us seven and some thousand dollars to do it every four years. But I think you can reap the benefits of. Doing it every several year because you may even come after four or six years, you may even be able to lower the tax rate again. That's what we found in terms of our discussion, our networking at this meeting and everything. That even though you, even though you do it, don't wait eight years because the market is volatile. Then if you do it like four, six or four, then what you do, you find out in terms of the volatile real estate market. That we're talking about seven one, we may be able to go revenue neutral even lower than seven one next time.
That's true. That's true.
That's what we, that's what we networking during, kind of this this past two days.
Well, I think the consensus was that we would look at it again next year. Right now, we keep.
No, we need, I don't think we should wait to next year.
And I thought, really, I thought we talked, what we said last time?
We did have that conversation, Dan. I agree with you. But when we went to this meeting where every commissioner in North Carolina, it went for thirty counties in eight years. Now it's twenty-two. Everybody's getting on board with growth. You cannot grow every eight years.
Well, the other part about eight years is, uh or four years, is it reduces the shock value.
That's true.
I agree.
That's what it really does. It reduces the shock value. Our community was shocked this time with this, with the uh.
They can shock women a house seventy-five thousand dollars, they can sell it for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Where's the shock? They got two shocks.
Somebody might want to sell ten of them, bud.
The shock is gonna be that seven hundred thousand dollars that you're putting out every four years instead of every eight.
Well, we asked that question too. We asked that question to, to senators. We asked that and she said, even though it looks like that you're spending more money every four years, you're actually getting it back.
Not getting it back.
We, in some form, we are getting it back. But we can't keep putting Band-Aids. We running out of Band-Aids.
How do you get it back?
Yeah, I wanna know.
You're getting it back. How are you getting it?
It's no return on that. Just like Tommy said the other.
No, 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 no. No, listen to me now. Listen. We spending seven hundred thousand every four years instead of every eight. But every eight years, it's a, it's a shock. It's a shock to the counties, a shock to the citizens.
This is the first time, this is my third revale. The first time that we've had a substantial price increase. This was a market.
Twenty years, Dan. It's twenty years. Things have changed.
This is the first time. Tility is not common.
In twenty years, this is the first time, the first time growth. We have to have growth, buddy. That's all I'm saying.
I mean, this might be forfeit. I don't know. I just think, but could we do a survey with our citizens and see what they like? Since they understand eight years now, I'm just saying. You can, you can go, you can go down, you can fold, fold over, it's okay.
What we said the other night was, we would look at it again next year. And that was the consensus the other night when we, when everybody.
Cause like I said, I understand the seven, when they said the seven, uh uh manager said it was, she thought six years would be great.
Something less.
Like I said, the eight year was a shocker. They were shocked. I was shocked. So I understood it. So what I'm saying, like I said, we ta- we 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 up there making a decision about our citizens.
Anything is better than this.
Well, let's put it this way, I I'm with Dan on this. We talked to, we say we look at it next year, let's look at it next year.
It's not gonna hurt anything to look at it next year. It's not changing anything, really.
We're not going through a revale next year, so it doesn't matter.
But I wanted to let you think about it earlier.
I agree.
We just talk, look at it next year.
We're not going through a revale next year. Nothing's gonna change.
My commissioner, I try, you try.
So the last thing I had on my list was carts. So I spoke to the city and um Terrell, didn't you really give me a lot of information as far as justification as to why, other than? They didn't feel as if this is sustainable. Um so they didn't wanna fund it just because it's not, it doesn't seem sustainable to fund them one time. Cart, round town shuttle, yeah. Yeah, right. So and Randy Cantor sent me an email um, cause I think he listened to the. To the work session on Tuesday. And. Mm-hmm. And so the only thing that he shared with me, he shared a report that I'll send to you all. Um but he said currently they have approximately three hundred trips per one hundred and sixty hours of service or one month. And the cost to carts is in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Um he said someone stated that a reservation has to be made with carts, but and you have to call one week in advance. He said it's actually twenty-four hours and it'll pick you up at your home and take you to where you need to go. Unlike the shuttle, you have to walk to, to and from, to and from a stop to use the service.
The stop station we have? How many? Thirty-seven?
Okay. And uh he says, we began the process of letting current passengers know by posting signage on every bus stop sign. And in the vehicle at the beginning of the third week of May. They are required by the state to post for thirty days. But they felt it would be fair to begin the process early in case something didn't ride that off them.
People in the community who heard about that we were getting rid of the round town shuttle, a lot of those people are really upset. Because a lot of them depend on them for transportation. Because um they don't have license or they don't have cars or for whatever reason, the reason why we implemented in the first place. But some of the statements that have been made is that once um new management came in, a lot of the bus schedules changed. A lot of the bus stops changed. And so that adversely affected some of the ridership that we talked about that was pre-COVID. If you are used to going at a certain time, that bus is not there, you're not gonna stand out there waiting on another whole hour for another bus to come or whatever. And it's not even the right stop. You're not gonna um go and stand there, you know, from what I was hearing. That a lot of people are complaining that the schedule was changed, the bus stops changed, and that was a lot to do with some of the ridership going down. Um you know, we still are in the same situation. You know, you do have some people who do work and if they're working within the city limits, a lot of people do. Rely on that round town shuttle to get to work and back, you know, um. Because they don't have any other way for to get to their places of employment, places of worship, grocery stores. Or wherever else they're trying to go. Um you know, some people depend on that just to get to the grocery store. You know, to buy groceries, you know, otherwise it's not like we are a city that has a uh huge taxi cab service. Some, some cities have not only bus stops, they they also have taxis. You can take a cab to wherever you wanna go. You may not know that you need it within twenty-four hours. And or be able to get through to make up an arrangement for someone to go to your house. Cause a lot of those buses going out of town.
Yeah.
The carts busted, they are not available for just in-town services because they're busy going to do Chapel Hill, wherever else they're going. And so some of these people need the immediate reliable transportation at a specific given time where they can go to the bus stop. Get on the bus, go when they need to go, come back when they need to come and not have to wait four or five hours for a carts bus to get back from Durham, Raleigh, so they can go home. Uh I think it is a valuable service. I think the people have come to rely on it. And we're gonna come to this situation where we get rid of round town. People don't want us to implement a public transportation. You know, Vance County cannot afford that. There's no way that we can implement a cab bus or like uh like Charlotte has, they have a bus that's running twenty-four seven.
Right.
They're they're running all day long. Every, you know, some stops, you got one stop coming one way and the other stop coming another way. We can't implement something like that. So to implement, to have the round town shuttle, I don't think, like I said before, it's. Should be only on the the point of whether or not we can afford to make a profit off of that. You know, from my understanding that we buying new buses, carts buses anyway, you know, that decision was made by cars to buy. Total new buses. You know, that's money's coming from somewhere as well. So you know, my opinion would be this is a service that we need. We don't need at this point in time to be trying to get rid of it. We're not giving people adequate notice and it may end up being a mess. Cause you're gonna plow the court system because these people gonna drive. If they can't get on that bus, they're gonna drive. Then you're gonna have an overload of policemen running around giving everybody tickets. Ain't nobody got driver's license in Henderson. Most people don't have them anyway right now. So now you come in a situation, you giving them the incentive to go ahead and get in the car and take a chance.
Right.
And then so you're putting more man, you're gonna need more manpower from the police department or whoever's gonna, or sheriffs or whatever. Or whoever stops these people because they're gonna drive. You know, they got to get to where they need to go and people are gonna make a way when there is no way. And I think we're just adding more problems.
Yeah, they, uh uh, you mean the city or, yeah, they're not. Their budget has been adopted. No, sir.
Which round town looking at, what's the shortfall?
Seventy-five thousand dollars for the entire year. So I I heard some conversations about possibly splitting. Well, we had talked about splitting it with the city, doing half and half. But if you all wanted to explore just funding them for six months in order to prepare. I guess through December for more notice. I don't, I don't know.
If funds out there available for them to tap at the state level or anyplace else?
I don't, I would have to ask Mr. Cantor. I don't know. I don't, I would, Archie's on the board. He probably can answer that. Yeah, Archie's on the board.
There was some conversation the other night.
It it is really um sad. Really sad to hear that the city with the round town shuttle. Uh benefits the city more than it benefits the county. No question about that. And for the city to say they don't want this uh fund, uh even put partial money. Into funding around town shuttle, which helps their citizens more than anything else, is really sad and dismal to think about. Now, that having been said, uh for Commissioner Finster, what she will say is very important. And if they don't wanna step up to the plate, then I think after all, carts is funded by the county. What I would like to do is, it, and you're right, it's not sustainable as it is right now. But I think that uh we ought to s- spend them for at least six more months. That gives the riders that Yolanda was talking about. Uh an opportunity to realize, find other ways to get around in the city. It gives the city the opportunity. Or carts rather, the opportunity to explore some of the things that Commissioner Finster brought up that they need to explore. But I don't think we need to put the axe to carts just like that, cut it off of the neck. Without giving some uh time in there for us to relook at that. So if the number, if the number is not a year, which is seventy-five thousand, it has to be a half year, which is six months.
What my opinion is.
Realizing then, a- and and carts is talking about going up on the fair anyway around the city. That's part of the answer to help them get their money back. They're gonna go up on the fair. But still, that's not sustainable for the long haul. They need another answer. But they, it's up to them to figure that out.
So would you recommend that um Commissioner, since you're on the board to, you know, to continue? Well, I, like I said, I'm for the, the cost is very important. I I wouldn't wanna see.
You know, and when you say that, what's the issue? We just voted ten cent up. What is the big issue here for six months?
One of the things to fund them. I support funding for six months. I also, I also support in terms of our county manager. Our county manager, some of us in terms of commission, talking to some of the city commissioners and the city council folks there. Play on that simply, they don't, to go back and visit that, because the point that Archie just made, it benefits. playing on that symphony and everything, they all to go back and visit that, cause the point that Archie just made, it benefits the people in the city. And I hate to see them do that to their citizens in Vance County. So I would like for us to have some more discussion with them in terms of, look, we gonna fund half of what they need for a year.
Okay.
Let's, let's revisit, cause there's your folks that are, your, it's the city folks that are not, that's gonna lose out. Like Yolanda said and everything, come to the courts, get into work, get initiatives and everything, we may be, they may be creating a bigger problem, and if they went up twenty cents, you know, say, say, guys, look, let's visit this again.
Okay. So, we're doing six months?
Say what, Yolanda?
What I would recommend is we go ahead and fund them for the six months, which is half of what we initially said we would do, and then revisit it in six months to see whether or not
your city can.
Things change, whether ridership increases, uh, whether the fact that they raised money that had, that helped with some of the funding. There's different things that could happen in that six month gap.
Right, and.
You know, whether or not at that point it's feasible to say we should go forward with another six months, or we just terminate the whole thing.
And, um, his email also states that he's applying for fifty-three-ten elderly and disabled grant um, as well, so hopefully those funding, those funds will come through to be able to support it moving forward.
When will they find out, long to that, right?
Uh, he, he didn't say, he just said that he plans to apply. He said anyone can apply and he plans to do so, he hasn't applied yet.
I have a question for Archie, why, I know you said they only give the grant to one county in the region, so why does that one county get to get the grant all the time? Is it?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, has, have anybody looked?
They've looked at, I know, I know Randy Cantor has looked into all of that, he's talked to them, but, you know, he can, he can follow that up with them.
Yeah, oh, could you sort of find that answer, you know, cause why do, it's not said that one, if only one in the region is entitled, is tied to the grant? Why does, why does that one get it all the time?
Uh, uh, my, my guess is that it's a renewal of the count, once you get the grant, you can renew it continuously or whatever. Uh, it's not up for grant, or it's not up for competition another time around.
Hmm.
If you got it, you got it.
But that's not.
But that's a guess on my part, I don't know the answer to your question.
And so I don't know if this is the answer, is that the, so I, I assume that that's the Oxford loop? Um, he, it says, I guess his email says it has twice the ridership as Vance County and has, and it has had continual growth every month over the last year, so it may be because it's growing more than ours, um, than, than the ridership here, so that may be why they received the grant, and we may not receive it, I'm not sure, but I can, I'll reach out to him, I'll get the answer for you.
Yeah, the other thing is too, there, there's some Uber-type programs that are, that are out there.
Mm, I think it's some micro, mm-hmm, micro transit.
Micro transit is coming, and, and Randy Cantor thinks that will help resolve the problem.
And that's, that's what, so just give some ideas of when that might be something.
He thinks it'll be here in the next year. Fingers crossed it'll be here next year.
Still used around the town, or that's a different form of transportation altogether?
There you go.
That micro works, is that a different form of transportation or that goes to support around the town?
It'll, it'll support the round town.
It'll replace round town.
It will replace and replace it.
Exactly, it will replace round town.
You talking about Uber?
No.
It's called a micro something.
Yeah, micro.
Micro transit, it's not micro transit.
Um, what's the anticipated date for the, for the six months that?
Well, just ask her to find that out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find out.
You don't think it'd be better if we do it for a year instead of six months?
Of course it would be better, but let's look at it for six months.
Six months, yeah.
Where we are.
Okay. All right, and so, um, I need to go back to one thing, cause that, that's the last thing on my list, but, um, so do y'all want to move forward with the model for having someone that handles the budget for sheriff's office and, um, the jail, similar to the Franklin County model?
Go through that one more time?
What we mentioned a few minutes ago, when Sean said that he. Yeah, so, do you all want to move forward with the Franklin County model in which the finance person for the sheriff's office and for the jail reports directly to my finance department, the position is housed in the sheriff's office, but it reports directly to finance.
So in Franklin County, they, they have a finance, their finance person is stationed in that?
Is they're stationed in, in, in the sheriff's office, but it reports to the finance office, they're not reporting to the sheriff. And they provide oversight for all the budget.
But it's, is, they hired, they hired someone to do that.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I was thinking, was our, when you said, first of all, I think it was our finance person, not being there, but just.
Yeah, um, yes, ma'am.
This, I'm not putting you in jail.
Sheriff, also, Sheriff, you have something?
Uh, Ms. Renee and I have spoke of this earlier, and for the last, this is my sixth year as sheriff of Vance County, and I never been told of the issues that I have, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, but no, it's just.
No, and, 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 of course.
But, but you, you even said that, though, we had that conversation, talked about finance and you having an accountant, we talked about that.
No, 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 I said, I appreciate it, I'm not, I'm not objecting, no, no, I'm not objecting, no, 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 no. I'm not objecting, I appreciate, appreciate her bringing that to my attention, and there's always room for improvement, and so anything that the, the board of commissioners can do to, to agree with, uh, Ms. Purry and, uh, and give me someone to, for that position, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I agree.
So that's, but we gotta hire someone to do it, right?
Yeah, so we would, yeah, so we would have to do a recruitment process, and I would make it an administrative officer, similar to other counties, they have administrative officers to oversee the budget for the sheriff's office and the detention center, so they would essentially handle the entire budget. It, it's a smart move.
See, see what's going on there, you have two people doing, doing that.
Yeah.
And, and needs to be just one person, and I agree with Ms. Purry.
Yes, absolutely.
That'd take so much off of you.
Yeah.
Oh, God, yes.
It will.
Oh, I'm not objecting to it, I just wanna let you know, and I thank you for.
Yeah.
Pregnant.
Yeah, I know we were talking about it, I apologize, I thought you were.
No, no, I'm not objecting to it.
Okay, okay, okay.
I got you, the first time, right?
Right, yeah, right. Right, yes, sir. So, you all okay with me moving forward with doing it? Okay, all right, so, and that's all I have on my list.
We're okay with it, we're okay with it.
Right.
That's your unanimous vote.
I don't have anything else, is there anything else that y'all wanted to? We're gonna clean it up, make it pretty.
That book, Carolyn, you out of school, you out of school too, huh?
Oh, he went through all the books, we did line by line before you all came in.
Okay.
Y'all finished with the line by line?
Yeah, we did it earlier, but we did that earlier with Dan.
Okay, so she, she gotta tweak what you wanna tweak in that too, though.
She'll tweak some of the.
Nothing that we need to be aware of.
No, I'm, some of it was just things that Miss posted, or.
Yeah.
But you took care of it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, I found it, and so, it's like since last services, but that's something we've used for years, but she was wrong.
We agreed to do that.
So just consolidate and put it where it needs to be, and we had some, some fund balance numbers where it been appropriated for fund that we didn't use, and so we just take those three hundred thousand dollars here and three hundred thousand dollars there and throw it out of the budget.
Got you.
All right. Everybody's, minds clear?
Yes.
Is that mine?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Do you want to, go ahead and set the date for budget adoption? Go ahead and, so I can have Kelly. At least a week, at minimum.
So you would have time.
Yeah, right. Cause we have to, we gotta clean up, we gotta clean up our spreadsheet, so it's gonna take all of next week at least, and we're off on Wednesday. We don't have to do another public hearing, we did our public hearing already on June third.
So then we have one day?
Uh, well, for what's that?
On the budget.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we had the public hearing already, cause the public hearing is on the proposed budget, yes, ma'am.
Can we look at Monday, the twenty-fourth?
Yes. Mm-hmm, yeah, that's fine.
Monday, the twenty-fourth, that, uh.
What time is good, are you out? You're, you're out already, okay, she's out already, it's cool, yeah, what's up, y'all? And at that meeting, I need to bring some ARPA policies to you all that were supposed to be created two, three fiscal years ago, uh, so we need to create those budgets so we don't have an audit finding for fiscal year twenty-four, and they have to be adopted by June thirty, so that'll be on the agenda as well.
Let's, let's do, um, five o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I'll have Kelly notice it.
Good for you? Oh, you're out of school?
Yeah, she's out, yeah, so we'll do budget adoption and approval of ARPA policies.
The year, I was gonna say, if she's out of school, we can do it earlier than five. All right, and we've got a, we can do it early than five?
We have a properties, we have a special closed session meeting Monday.
Why we can't do it early?
I'm gonna be out of town.
Okay.
Tell Killer, I, you know.
Okay. We good? Thank y'all. Monday at five o'clock. And we have properties committee, properties meeting as well.
Okay, it says four o'clock will be.
Properties, what is, what did Kelly do? I can't remember.
I should say word. I think it said four o'clock.